Good afternoon. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Baker.
Not here.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo.
President.
Counselor Edwards.
Here.
Counselor Asabi George.
President.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley.
President.
Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zakeham.
Here.
Madam President, everyone is here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would like all guests at this time to please rise, as well as my colleagues and staff. At this time, I'm going to invite up Counselor O'Malley, who's going to introduce our clergy for the day, who will provide invocation. At that time, I ask that folks remain standing as Counselor O'Malley leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon, colleagues and guests. I am delighted to introduce a very dear friend to Catherine and I, the Reverend Ben Perkins of Hope Central Church in Jamaica Plain. Ben is a native of Los Angeles. He came to Boston in 1996 to receive his divinity degree at the Harvard Divinity School. He has lived in Brighton, Dorchester, Jamaica Plain, and West Roxbury. Currently lives in West Roxbury with his husband, David Brown, no stranger to many of us. And he's an amazing guy. In addition to being a reverend and offering such spiritual guidance and advice, he's been active in health care. He's been very involved with Fenway Health Community Center, as well as his other job, working at the American Heart Association. He's just an amazing man, a great neighbor, a terrific friend, and I'm so delighted that he will be offering our prayer before today's meeting. So please join me in welcoming, from Hope Central Church in Jamaica Plain, the Reverend Ben Perkins.[184.12][184.12](APPLAUSE).
So, good afternoon, everyone. I'm honored to be invited here today to deliver the invocation for the City Council meeting. As we gather here this afternoon, I am aware that there are possibly many faith traditions represented in this room, as well as those who profess no faith tradition at all. Recognizing that this is the beauty of a truly diverse community, I invite everyone in the room, in this space and time, to collect yourself in whatever way you feel called. And so let us begin. Please pray with me. Oh, One of many names and no name, we come to you today grateful for another day on life's journey, grateful for this gathering of public servants and community, and grateful for this opportunity to embody the civic and the civil. We pray for these, our public servants, as they take the ongoing mantle of governing, that they may serve in love. We pray for this community, the city of Boston, the city of exquisite beauty and painful paradoxes. We pray that the city may live fully into that beacon on the hill. Oh, Holy One, instill in us a renewed resolve to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you, that in your Spirit we may be emboldened to realize the call and commission of the Prophet Isaiah's immortal words, to bring good news to the afflicted, to bind up the brokenhearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and freedom to the prisoners, to proclaim your favorable year. And we ask this in the name of all that is holy and just and true, for love's sake. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[335.00][335.00](APPLAUSE).
At this time, we're going to move into the business of the council, and starting with the approval of the minutes. There are no corrections to be made to the minutes from the last meeting. They will stand approved, hearing and seeing, no objections. The minutes from the last meeting stand approved. Communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Docket number 0444, message and order approving appropriation of $9,486,511 for the purpose of paying the cost associated with boiler and roof repairs at the following schools: East Boston High School, Sumner School K-5, O'Donnell School K-5, Russell School K-5, and Tobin School K-8. This includes the payment of all incidental or related thereto, and for which the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as the MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools.
Docket 044 would be placed in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0445, message and order authorizing the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation Department to accept and expend park land acquisition and renovations for the communities, known as Park Program, grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of Conservation Services, in the amount not to exceed $400,000. The fund will provide capital improvements to Noize Playground located in the neighborhood of East Boston. The grant was initially filed on February 14, 2018, and is being resubmitting this order to include the clarifying language that the Parks Department will permanently dedicate Noize Playground for park purposes. This language is required by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the purpose of this grant.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a very unique situation, where this body has already voted unanimously on this $400,000 grant. My committee held a hearing, Counselor Edwards participated as well. This is a wonderful thing. Apparently, the state, in order to receive state matching funds, needed clarifying language that would designate Noize Playground for park purposes permanently, so who can be against that? It's just protecting a park. It was, it was a, perhaps in the drafting of the original letter, it was not included or made clearly there. So given the fact that we've already had this hearing, we've already voted on it unanimously, it's for a wonderful expenditure, nearly half a million dollars, for a terrific park in East Boston, I'm asking that we suspend the rules and pass this, so that the funds will be available and we can get to work on what will be a wonderful, wonderful place for the young and the young at heart in East Boston. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. At this time, Counselor O'Malley, who is the Chair of the Committee on Environment, Sustainability in Parks, moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0445. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0445 has been passed. And before we move on, Madam Clerk, to reports of public officers and others, I do want to acknowledge a special visitor, and I should have done it at the beginning, but I apologize. Counselor Janey, we have many special visitors. Everyone in here is special. But we have a sixth grader with us, who is joining a meeting for the first time, and she is here in person, and her name is Jasmine Lang. If you could stand up, Jasmine.[591.66][591.66](APPLAUSE). She is a sixth grader at the Ten Acre Country Day School in Wellesley. She lives in Roxbury. She's a constituent of Counselor Janey. And we always are encouraging our young people to participate and be a part of our meetings. And so when they do, I think we should acknowledge them. So Jasmine, thank you for being here. Thank you for making this meeting a little bit more exciting. So thank you. And Counselor Janey, thank you. Now back to the business. Madam Clerk, reports of public officers and others.
Madam President, I'll read all three matters together.
That would be great. Thank you.
Docket number 0446, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its February 14, 2018 meeting. Docket number 0447, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the mayor on papers acted upon at the City Council at its meeting on February 28, 2018. And docket number 0448, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Ann Marie Noonan as Director of Labor Relations effective March 5, 2018.
Docket 0446 through 0448 would be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action. At this time, in reference regarding docket 0129, I'm going to ask that we pull the first late-file matter out of order, which offers clarification on docket 0129. So all those in favor of pulling this late-file matter out of order, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first late-file matter into the record.
Thank you, Madam President. In the office of Mayor, Martin J. Walsh, March 21, 2018, Dear City Clerk Feeny, docket number 0129, An Ordinance Allowing Short-Term Residential Rentals in the City of Boston, was filed with the Boston City Clerk on January 19, 2018. During a robust process, including public hearing and two working sessions, important and complex questions were raised. Members of the City Council and I agree that more time is necessary to ensure that we enact the best and most effective policy and regulations regarding short-term rentals in Boston. My administration and the City Council have a shared commitment to ensure expeditious passage of a comprehensive legislation that prevents displacement and protects the quality of life in our neighborhoods. I look forward to re-filing a proposal in the coming weeks and working collaboratively with the Boston City Council to produce the most effective policy. Therefore, I hereby withdraw docket number 0129, An Ordinance Allowing Short-Term Residential Rentals in the City of Boston, originally filed with the City Clerk on January 9, 2018. Sincerely, Martin J. Walsh, Mayor of the City of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think the letter is pretty self-explanatory. Docket 0129 has been withdrawn, and we will continue conversations on the matter. Madam Clerk, if you could read docket 0263.
Docket 0263, order for hearing to consider the benefits of net-zero carbon requirements and incentives for future construction in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley, the Chair of the Committee on Environment, Parks and Sustainability.
Thank you.
Environment, Sustainability in Parks.
That's right. Just don't call me late for supper, Madam President. Thank you for that. Very, very briefly, I just wanted to really thank the number of you. Virtually every office was represented. Madam President, you were there. Counselor Flynn, Counselor Baker had some great questions. This was a follow-up to an initiative that we started last fall, really last December, I should say, last winter, on looking at ways that we can work to address the fact that 50% of our carbon greenhouse gas emissions come from buildings, and in an unprecedented building boom, we're only going to see that exacerbated. We don't need to get into how climate change is affecting us right now. It was one of the best working sessions that I've convened in my nearly eight years on this body. We had tremendous experts from the business community, from the public sector, from the private sector, neighbors and local government across the Commonwealth came, but to really talk about best practices and what we ought to be doing. So there's no action to be taken. I'm going to ask that this matter remain in committee. I'd like us to hold an additional series of working sessions, you know, in the months and year ahead. But I really think we have an opportunity here to lead nationally on what it means to really build sustainable, environmentally conscious buildings, houses, really, really have a tremendous impact. So thank you all for your indulgence of letting me touch on this issue. It's a great thing, and I'm excited to continue to work with all of you to get it done. So ask that this remain in committee, and look forward to another working session in probably two months or so. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Counselor O'Malley for having this hearing. It was this working session, great working session. This issue is very real. Savin Hill Baseball Field, where I played my Little League, has been underwater. I've never seen it in my life underwater twice in the last two months, two feet of water, ocean coming right up Marcy Boulevard stopped. This is where I think we'll probably have the most impact on this issue, and the business is going to grow into this. It's going to become about business practice, and then when the building practices become more standardized and more, more the way of doing business, I think we'll be able to get a handle on the costs, the differences in costs, but also I think we should be looking as a body, as how do we incentivize people to build, to build this way, whether it's tax credits, or, you know, some, when the city's giving away land, or not giving it away, but, but giving it a reduced cost. These buildings should, should be built. I just want to congratulate Counselor, Counselor O'Malley. Again, it was a really, really good working session. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Docket 0263 will remain in the Committee on Environment, Sustainability in Parks. Madam Clerk, if you could read dockets 0405 through 0408 into the record, that'd be great.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0405, Message and Order to Reduce FY18 Appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $4,824,768 to Provide Funding for the Police Department for the FY18 Increases Contained Within the Collective Bargaining Agreements between the City of Boston and the Boston Police Superior Offices Federation. Docket number 0406, Message and Order Approving a Supplemental Appropriation of $4,824,768 to Cover the FY18 Costs Items Contained in the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of Boston and the Boston Police Superior Offices Federation. The terms of the contract are July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017, and July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2020. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% effective the first pay period of July of each fiscal year. The agreement also includes increases to existing Quinn Bill slash education benefits, modified cumulative risk benefits beginning in July 2016, and increases to hazardous duty pay beginning July 2017. Docket number 0407, Message and Order to Reduce FY18 Appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining for the Amount of $82,323 to Provide Funding for the Police Department for the FY Increases Contained Within the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of Boston and the Boston Police Detective Benevolent Society Forensic Group. Docket number 0408, Message and Order Approving a Supplemental Appropriation of $82,323 to Cover the FY18 Costs Items Contained Within the Collective Bargaining Agreements between the City of Boston and the Boston Police Detective Benevolent Society Forensic Group. The terms of the contract are October 1, 2016, through September 30, 2017, and October 1, 2017, through September 30, 2020. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2% effective the first pay period of January of each fiscal year. The agreement also includes other benefits, including new specialty differentials beginning in 2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before I acknowledge Counselor Siomo, I also want to acknowledge that we have representatives from the union, as well as some of our most incredible detectives and officers, and I'm sure you will also acknowledge them here in the chamber. So thank you, guys, for being here, and of course, thank you for the work that you do on behalf of all of us. Counselor Siomo, you have the floor. Counselor Siomo, Committee Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to ask for support of dockets 0405 through 0408. The committee held its hearing yesterday in this chamber, and as you know, collective bargaining agreements are usually funded through the collective bargaining reserve and come into the council on two dockets. The first to transfer the funds from the collective bargaining reserve to the department, and the second docket authorizes the appropriation of those funds. Docket 0405 and 0406 is the agreements between the City of Boston and the Boston Police Superior Offices Federation. There are approximately 250 members in this bargaining unit. These two consecutive agreements span the pay periods beginning July 1, 2016, through pay period beginning June 30, 2020. As in previous contracts that we've reviewed, Boston Patrolmen's and other public safety officials, it pretty much mirrors all of those same wage pattern increases, and also some reforms with swaps. For example, clarification in the language concerning swaps to limit potential for additional compensation when a detective superior swaps with someone on a different shift, and creation of an administrative efficiencies regarding start times of vacations and holidays. Other cost items in this contract include the gradual increase to fully fund the Quinn Bill Education Incentive Plan between fiscal year 18 and 19, and incremental increases to the hazardous duty differential between FY18 and FY20. Docket 0407 and 0408, the agreement between the City of Boston and the Boston Police Detective Benevolent Society Forensics Group. There are approximately 27 employees in this unit. These two consecutive agreements extend from the first pay period, January 2017, to the pay period beginning January 2020. Consistent with other previously funding agreements in this cycle, 2% increase for each of the pay periods. Specific language includes a cap on sick leave, redemption upon retirement, addition of paid parental leave benefit, clarification of the uniform items to be provided. Other items of the contract include the establishment of an on-call provision that provides employees that are on call to respond to crime scenes with a $200 payment for the week, and the establishment of specialty differentials for criminalists. I'd like to recognize, well, before I closed the hearing yesterday, I noted, especially lately, the nightly news. We see what's going on with law enforcement in other communities across our country. I think we have every reason to be proud of the men and women that serve us from the Boston Police Department, EMS, fire, that they put their lives on the line. I think we're extremely fortunate to have such professional people, and I'd like to recognize President Don Casey, Vice President Mike Talbot, and Marty O'Malley, as well as President Mark Parolin and Gene Carroll. Thank you, and your members, for all you guys do. So I recommend the order to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo, and thank you for the recognition of them. At this time, Counselor Siomo moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of dockets 0405 through 0408. I will take each one separately. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for docket 0405.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey. Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. And Counselor Zakeham. Counselor Zakeham, yes. Madam President, docket number 0405 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0405 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for docket 0406.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey. Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley.
Yes.
Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. And Counselor Zakeham.
Yes.
Counselor Zakeham, yes. Madam President, docket number 0406 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0406 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket 0407.
Docket 0407, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey. Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley.
Yes.
Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. And Counselor Zakeham.
Yes.
Counselor Zakeham, yes. Madam President, docket number 0407 has received unanimous approval.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0407 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket 0408.
Docket number 0408, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley.
Yes.
Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. And Counselor Zakeham.
Yes.
Counselor Zakeham, yes. Madam President, docket number 0408 has received a unanimous approval.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0408 has been passed. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0449, Counselor Campbell offered the following order for hearing regarding as-of-right zoning projects and exploring imposing notice requirements and other community-informed conditions.
Counsel President Andrea Campbell.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. I think this hearing order is a little self-explanatory, but I want to give some context, because the hearing order comes from a recent incident that happened in Codman Square section of my district, but I'm sure happens in other parts of the city as well. So Puppi's came before the community in October of 2016, and they filed for a conditional use permit to operate the restaurant with certain conditions. The community, there was a robust community process, and Codman Square and many neighbors stood up and actually opposed the project, and subsequently, the permit was denied. Then, in, sort of after a period of litigation, sometime afterwards, Puppi's filed again and actually applied for an allowed use permit. They were approved, and no notification went to the community. I didn't receive notification. No one knew about this, until a resident in the Codman Square community was walking down the street and saw Puppi's was under construction. As you can imagine, she was shocked. She ran back and told all of her neighbors and everybody. And she also called the Dorchester reporter. And so we have been having conversations, particularly around projects that go before the board, where the community has denied approval, and because, for many reasons, either it doesn't align with the values of their, that community, or it's not in line with the vision that that community has for their residents. So in this particular case, Codman Square has been pushing for a really long time, healthy living, health- healthy food. They do year-round farmers markets, and I know all of my colleagues, I think, or many of them, have participated. They just had their winter's farmers market open up. They also have non-smoking. So, Reverend Lesch has been, and the bold teens have been active supporters of getting smoking out of their community and out of housing and out of housing developments in the Codman Square area. So, this hearing order, it's just that it's a hearing order to have a conversation, and it's to have a conversation with both the BPDA and ISD, but also other interested parties about a couple of things. One, if a project goes up and is not approved the first time, and they proceed as a right, should they be required to notify folks who oppose them in the first place? I think at a minimum, that's not a lot to ask. We don't have to do it for every project. For those projects that really actually did a robust community process, pulled the community in as we expected, which Puppi's did, but then later decided to do something different. I had a similar occurrence in my Rosendale section of the district with a Taco Bell. So, at a minimum, should they be required to give notice? In addition, for as-of-right projects, should we be imposing other conditions? In this case, Codman Square is really looking at this idea of possibly filing an ordinance or something that restricts, say, the number of fast-food restaurants that can open along the Washington Street corridor in that community, which aligns with the very vision they have for their residents and for the healthy living for all of the people who live not just in their community, but those who pass through their community. So, this is an opportunity to have a conversation with BPDA about this and what is possible, what the council can do. And then, I will add, one concern that came up is when the restaurant applied for a conditional use permit, I'm sorry, an allowed use permit as an as-of-right project, there were some conditions that were placed on their takeout provision. So, the question became, does ISD have the resources or the capacity to enforce the takeout restaurant restrictions? Who is going to go into Puppi's and count the number of chickens or the amount of chicken that is being made in the kitchen to ensure that this restaurant is adhering to those takeout provisions? I think it's a lot to ask, and I think the question about whether or not ISD has the resources and human capital to enforce this is a legitimate one. So, I just hope that this example, which I think shows up in different communities, is an opportunity for us just to have the conversation about this and to think creatively and out the box about how we support our residents, particularly when we ask them to show up and to have really great conversations with developers, with folks coming in that want to do good things in the neighborhood. And I will tell you, what I love about Codman Square is these are the residents who I like to think are reasonable, are rational, rational, are not anti, are not an automatic no, but like to participate in the conversation, but have visions and dreams for their community that I absolutely want to support. So, I look forward to this hearing. I hope that all of my colleagues will participate, and that this can be a real robust dialogue about other things that we could possibly do around some of the current zoning regulations. Thank you, Counsel Siomo, and thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Counsel Sabby George?
Thank you, Madam, or Mr. Vice Chair, sorry.
[laughter]
And I would like to request that my name be added, and I'd like to thank the Maker for putting this together, and ask that, I hope during this hearing, that we add to the conversation some dialogue about who, and some clarity, about who should be noticing our residents and the community at large regarding projects that are happening in our neighborhood, sort of the who should be noticing, whether it's the City of Boston, the Office of Neighborhood Services, whether it's the developer or the proponent of the proposal, and then also what the timeline is and what the information that should be included on that notice, because we find that a number of residents don't get the information in a timely manner, and that it's not consistent across the city on the timeline of those notices, both what might be received in the mail through ZBA or what's hand-delivered through flyers. And it often, if they're not engaged with that flyer, oftentimes, our residents become further disengaged, and that is a problem when we can, if we are to consider our residents the city's greatest asset. So, I look forward to this hearing and look forward to clarity on this in particular as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Please add Counsel Sabby George's name. Counselor Edwards?
I just wanted to rise and also congratulate the Maker. I think this conversation is well overdue, especially in the communities that I represent, with the amount of development that is going on and increasing. The ability for developers or for businesses to just figure out what they have as-of-right and to literally do the opposite of what the community just said, or to ignore them altogether, is something that I'm deeply concerned about. I would like not only to add the robust discussion about what the notice would look like and who would do it, but also, I would love to see a summary of the as-of-right laws broken down by neighborhood in terms of height, in terms of restaurants, so that we're very clear to community organizations, when they go to start this conversation, what can and can't happen. And I also love to have a robust discussion about, just because it's as-of-right doesn't mean that there aren't benefits and certain obligations that you have to a community. So, looking at how we can require folks who are building, even if it is as-of-right, to be part of the process, but also to benefit the community as well.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Would you like your name added as well?
Yes.
Please add Counselor Edwards' names. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please add my name, and also, through the Maker, I just asked to include all deferrals. As you know, anytime anyone defers up there, none of the neighbors get an additional notice at all, and it's really incumbent upon Counselor Sabby George who's inquiring as to who it should be. I would think it should be Inspection Services. They bring in tens of millions of dollars of new permitting every year. It's really a software mechanism, and it's the hit of a button that could very easily notify the butters. It's also, it's become kind of a game and a little bit of a trick that contested projects and their council and folks doing their ground game will use. They get everyone all fired up, and then everyone shows up at the hearing, and at the 11th hour, they defer, and then conveniently, they get another date, usually around a holiday, July 4th, whatever, and no additional notice goes out. Counsel Flynn and I were just discussing that it's really up to the director butters and/or the other neighbors to really stay on this. It shouldn't really be their, that shouldn't be their focus. They got other things to worry about. It should be the proponent, and the proponent should be required to renotice through Inspection Services and through the Office of Neighborhood Services. The guessing game, the hocus pocus, the who you know, the who you hire, the gamesmanship, it has to be taken out of this process. And one way we could do it is through that deferral process, require a brand-new renoticing, along with an additional meeting, a butters meeting. We're dealing with it now in our neighborhood where we have an interim IPAD overlay on anything over 1,000 square feet, just to, one, bring some, restore some sanity to the process, but to slow things down a little bit, and also to recognize that, you know, community process in a butter input, it's critical. It's to the process. And when you can go and have a contested process and have a community meeting and then get your date, and then when you show up at your date, the morning of the date, you withdraw, you defer, and then you get another date, six, eight, 10 weeks down the road, and there's no additional notice going up, and then that party shows up again, with 50 people and their busloads come in, and then at the next hearing date, no one's there, making it look like everyone's on board, when in fact, no one got any notice. No one knew, and it's arguably, it's, at that point, it's us and our staffs at the 11th hour, making a round of phone calls to try to get people in here on short notice. It's just inappropriate, and it's just really, it's dysfunctional. So, I would argue that through that process, I'd love to, again, participate in this hearing, and ask that, in addition to this particular specific instance, we also look at all deferrals. Anytime someone comes in and through their council and/or themselves, as proponents, they defer, that starts the clock over again, or at least in the very instance, starts a notice clock over again. And Inspection Services and Neighborhood Services, they're in the perfect position to execute that. So, please, again, add my name. Look forward to expedited hearing.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Please add Counsel Flaherty's name. Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. I'd like to have my name added, and I agree with everything that everybody said. I would like to quickly add, when you go for the ZBA for a variance, it's a privilege. You're supposed to prove hardship, and sometimes variance is given because it's a good project, but nothing derails a project faster than the very next-door neighbor not getting a notice, even on a good project. And as a district city councilor, when you go into a meeting and everybody's on board, and then three or four days later, you get that phone call, "I knew nothing about the meeting," it drives people crazy. We also, through the chair, I'd love to add, this new barrier that BPDA has settled where it's 300 feet, that's ridiculous. You know, community groups need to know, and that needs to be expanded, and especially in the larger projects where builders or developers are planning on making plenty of money on it, a certified piece of mail to a certain area wouldn't kill them, but it would certainly make their process more viable. So, I'm looking forward to the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and I'd like to offer congratulations to the author. Obviously, you have touched a nerve here, which is why so many of us are rising to speak. It's this bizarre duality where there are many seemingly innocent, innocuous projects where the owner has to go through incredible hoops, jump through hoops, and go to great lengths to satisfy when virtually everyone likes. I'm talking about your dorm or a shed or something along those lines, where there are other projects that are deemed as-of-right that really ought not be, in my opinion, and can spring up overnight. So, anything we can do to strengthen the community process and awareness, a lot of times, people just want to know what is going on next door, what is going on down the street for me. We recognize that many zoning variances can trigger some hard feelings and some ill-will, and unfortunately, that's part of doing business. But anything we can do to make it so that more information is shared and more people have an opportunity to at least be aware of what is happening is a step in the right direction. So, I commend the Maker of this hearing order. I ask that my name be added, and I look forward to being able to effect some change here, because this problem has not gotten better. In fact, it has gotten significantly worse over the last couple of years. Thank you.
Please add Counsel O'Malley's name. Chair recognizes Counsel Presley.
That's okay.
Oh, just to sign on. Please add Counsel Presley's name, Counsel Janey, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Baker, and please add the chair's name. And please assign docket 0449 to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 0450, Counsel Presley offered the following order for hearing to discuss access to English-language learner programs and adult basic education in the City of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This body has many times taken bold stances in support of immigrants, especially in the face of anti-immigrant policies coming out of Washington. We've done this, and we've led on the Boston Trust Act, on DACA, on TPS, on bilingual education, on ELL, on municipal ID. In 2015, I filed a hearing order in the wake of the closing of a number of adult basic education and English-language learner facilities in the City of Boston. In that instance, we were able to galvanize the support to keep those particular offices from shuttering their doors in East Boston, in Matapan, and in the South End. But the problem has continued to grow, and so has the wait list. If you missed the Globe article on March 9th entitled "Invisible in Any Language: Massachusetts Latinos Face Intense Inequality," it reports that Latinos in Massachusetts face the greatest income inequality of any state in the nation. And certainly, we can agree that one's ability to be competitive in the job market, to be the best wage earner they can be to provide for their family, is as much about the incredible leadership and advocacy of Council rule around language access, right, addressing those language and cultural barriers, but it's also about language skills that people need in order to be competitive in the job market. That Globe article also stated that currently, by modest estimations, the wait list in Massachusetts for English-language learner programs is a staggering 16,000, and that is a modest assessment. And so, I think, in light of this being an issue for our entire immigrant community, the story in the Globe is really just a tipping point to a broader issue that we need to address, and given this renewed spotlight, that it's time we take inventory of what the city and the Commonwealth are doing, what they're offering, and that hopefully that we have an expedited hearing to consider this in the context of the budget season. Thank you.
Counsel Presley, thank you. Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to commend the Maker. Thank you so much. This is such an important issue. As someone who has spent a good chunk of my career advocating for English-language learners in Boston Public Schools, I understand the challenges that the system faces, but also that there are many young people who are not being served, who have transitioned out, who have not acquired English, and how that hurts them in terms of their opportunity to go on to college or to career. And so, just to add a face to this challenge, you know, a couple of years ago, I was in my education advocacy, working with a family who had recently come from DR to the United States. It was a mom joining her husband, who was already here, and her two young daughters. The youngest daughter entered into Boston Public Schools, was put into a program for SLIF students because they had limited English and education back at home. The mom was able to get into an ESL program because she was a BPS parent. The older daughter, however, who had already graduated from high school in DR, was kind of just left in limbo. She did not, so we tried, I tried to help her get into programs, but because of this wait list issue, she was not able to get into a program where that she could acquire some English, go on to work, or go on to school. She was not able to enter into Roxbury Community College or Bunker Hill because the cost was prohibitive. And so, it just, we really need to do something here. She ended up, this young lady, who is now, I think, 19 years old, is currently enrolled in Boston Public Schools, even though she has a high school diploma from her own country. But, so now, she's just being set back for a year or two, or however many, in terms of being able to enter into college or to the job market. So, I just certainly want to add my name, and again, I appreciate this. We should all be ashamed that Massachusetts is last in the country when it comes to the income and wealth gap for Latinos. That's just unheard of, and so, I'm proud to stand with you on this issue. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor. Oh, actually, before Counsel Edwards takes the floor, Counsel Janey, would you like to add your name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Janey's name, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Sabby George, Counsel Flynn, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, Counsel Baker. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Congratulations, Baker. The conversation is not just about income inequality, I feel, but it's about the future of our city. As you mentioned, 20% of our city is Latino, but there are many beyond that percentage who do not speak English as a first language. So, our investment in assuring that they, their children, their families are able to access English lessons is an actual investment in our future that will pay many times over the amount of an English class. I myself, as I was a teacher when I first got here, I taught volunteering to teach ELL classes, and the wait list was, because they were free, our wait list was many years, many years long. And what I found continually is that the effort that folks would make to come there, working two or three jobs, sometimes working at Dunkin' Donuts, and three or four shifts, but they would always make English class. And what I've also found is that without investing in this industry of English class, it has flourished almost an impossible elitist set of English schools that many people are paying a ridiculous amount of money in order to learn the English language. And that excludes a lot of folks, a lot of folks who are just coming here, or folks who are low-income. So, I am beyond excited about being able to invest and making sure our city is putting the money behind this kind of education. I say continually to a lot of people who want to talk about immigrants coming here and not learning English, I always say the first thing you should do is visit an ELL class and see what the wait list looks like. There's nothing more than families would love to do than learn English and make sure that they can live the American dream.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and echo so many of the comments that were already said. Thank you so much to the lead on this. One statistic that always sticks with me came from one of the BPS budget hearings way back. There was a question about the students that are doing really well in Boston Public Schools, and, you know, what is sort of the common thread between those who end up graduating at the top of their class across every BPS school? And the answer actually was the students that are FLEP. So, LEP is limited English proficient, and the way that that works in our school system is that you come in at level one, when you need the most boost, and then you go to level one, two, three, four, five, and after you've sort of finished all five levels in the system, and many of the kids do it in fewer than five years, you're then still tagged as quote-unquote FLEP, formerly limited English proficient in the system. So, to me, that proves that when we do it, and when we do it well, the opportunities that it opens up for our kids, for their parents, for community members, for workers, is incredible. And it just reinforces what I think everyone on this council already knows. And it just reinforces what I think everyone on this council already knows, that we do this work of inclusion and access, not just because it's the right thing to do, it is the right thing to do, but because this is really about investment and strength and our city's ability to grow, only if we're taking in what every single person has to offer, regardless of if they need a little boost in English first, or whatever job training or other support they can get to close that gap. So I couldn't be more excited. Shout out to English for New Bostonians for the great work that they do and the results that they see, and I'm sure they'll be part of this conversation, too. Looking forward to participating. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd also like to ask my name to be added, and I'd like to highlight that outside this building, there's a plaque to our immigrants, and it reads, "America's Promise Has Drawn People From All Corners of the World to Boston in Search of a Better Life for Themselves and Their Families. Their Traditions and Values Have Become the Fabric of Our Neighborhoods. Here in Boston, we seek to fulfill that promise by providing a life filled with peace, dignity, and opportunity for all who make this great city home." So I'd just like to add my name, but to make sure that, you know, those immigrants that are living here in Boston have access to English language programs, adult education programs, I'd like to thank the maker for taking a strong leadership role on this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Madam Clerk, I think we already recorded it, but if you could add Counsel Flynn's name, if you could also add Counsel Flaherty. At this time, docket, second, oh, as well as the chair, thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, docket 0450 will be placed in the Committee on Education. Madam Clerk, if you could read docket 0451.
Docket number 0451, Counsel Presley offered the following order, proving a petition for special law regarding an act authorizing additional licenses for the sale of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises in Boston.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. In my apologies in advance, I'm going to do my best to be succinct here, but we have a number of new faces on the council, so I do need to provide some historical context as well. So I'm proud to introduce our second round of liquor license reform legislation. I want to thank the mayor and his team for their partnership and their commitment to this issue, specifically Chief Barrows, and also Chair Pulgeni of the Licensing Board, and to our mayor, who had a commitment to reforming our state's liquor license laws, which were antiquated, and really suppressing economic growth and development equitably throughout the city of Boston. He had that commitment long before he was elected mayor, so I do want to thank him for his partnership, and all of you for the 2014 Home Rule that we did successfully pass. Again, in the spirit of collaboration, since there are so many new faces here, we are using the neighborhoods that were included in the 2014 legislation as our starting point. That is sort of the blueprint for this, right? So the neighborhoods, I want to state them specifically, that are currently included in this second Home Rule petition are Roxbury, Matapan, Dorchester, Hyde Park, Jamaica Plain, Mission Hill, and East Boston. Now, for those of you who have heard debate on this second Home Rule previously, you know that we are allocating licenses for Main Streets, and we are allocating licenses to neighborhoods. Because what we realized through our last Home Rule petition is that neighborhoods were still being pitted against one another. So in this latest iteration, what we are doing is instead of pitting Main Streets against neighborhoods and neighborhood against neighborhood, Main Streets will have their own allocation, neighborhoods will have their own allocation, and they will be bankrolled, and it will be up to the community to activate them according to their own desires and vision for their neighborhood. So as an example, Matapan, which is a neighborhood we did not see benefit from the first Home Rule, because no one applied. There's a lot of work we have to do to build a bench there, right? And so with this new legislation, there would be 15 licenses allocated for each neighborhood. That would be five, five, and five over a period of three years. So for Matapan, if no one applies the first year, then those licenses will bankroll. If no one applies the second year, those licenses will bankroll, and so they will be there waiting to be activated. So I want this, and so I should also add, I want to thank our partners at the state level, who have been a part from the beginning of this second Home Rule petition, and they have asked that we send up to them an amendable Home Rule petition. So again, this is a blueprint and a starting point, because I want to be mindful of the fact that we have many new counselors on the body, but I look forward to working with all of you and our colleagues on the state level to expand the reach of this Home Rule petition. Again, ultimately, what we will send up to the State House is amendable, but we can debate and talk about what other neighborhoods with the partnership of the district counselors and state representatives want to be included to expand the reach of this second Home Rule petition. The city of Boston continues to grow, but income inequality and wealth disparity also continue to grow, and we know that restaurants are critical economic, social, and cultural anchors for any neighborhood. Now roughly 20 existing restaurants from our first legislation have been able to expand their offerings with new liquor licenses. And do you know, a number of those restaurants have said their bottom line improved by 30%? And from our first Home Rule petition, 40 brand-new restaurants have opened with the 2014 liquor licenses. Game-changing, wealth-building in perpetuity, neighborhoods like Roxbury that have not seen a new restaurant for 15 or 20 years now have five. Neighborhoods like Dorchester that have seen a growth of 17, you know, just as a quick example. But the demand continues to grow for neighborhood sit-down restaurants with full amenities, and that is why we need to create a new ceiling for the number of licenses. Now, I know many of you are worried about the devaluing of existing liquor licenses, and you have every right to feel uneasy. I know how much hard work these families have put into their craft and their businesses. These are, you know, family-run and owned businesses. But to contextualize this and to be fair, our first round of legislation, the going price for a full liquor license in 2014 was $400,000, you know, which is incredibly cost prohibitive, and it's going right back up there, right? So that's a cost prohibitive barrier to our economic growth and development. And in my opinion, we have always been considerate of these concerns, and which is why we have made it a point to introduce legislation that sequences the onboarding of these licenses so as not to saturate the market. We have made every single license in the 2018 legislation non-transferable, meaning they are not competing with transferable licenses in the market. And we have staggered the creation of licenses over three years, again, to build in time for adjustments. Further, we have restricted 80% of these licenses to specific neighborhoods, meaning the New Seaport or downtown bar will still have to pay for a transferable license. Again, the neighborhoods included in our original blueprint are Roxbury, Matapan, Dorchester, Hyde Park, Jamaica Plain, Mission Hill, and East Boston. These restricted licenses are neighborhood-specific, meaning a license designated for Matapan cannot be used in East Boston or anywhere else in the city. And this legislation also creates a new classification of licenses called umbrella licenses. The goal of these licenses is to protect large neighborhood, I'm sorry, is to protect local neighborhood restaurants from large-scale development. And we are talking about very large-scale projects. Only a handful of sites would actually qualify to apply for those licenses. Think like a Tremont Crossing project across the street from BPD in Roxbury. I want this legislation to be a longer-term fix for our restaurant industry while our population continues to grow and projects to pass 800,000 by 2050. In every other municipality, their amenities have kept pace with the growth of population, except for the city of Boston. And that is about wealth building and job creation, it is also about quality of life. So I look forward to our having a robust conversation with all of you about how we can make this a better Home Rule. I believe everyone here is aware of the measure, and I hope to be able to move right into a working session so we can roll our sleeves up and get right into the details. We do have a deadline based on the end of the state legislative session, and in fairness to our colleagues, I want to give them time to debate and improve the Home Rule before the end of July. I look forward to discussing this matter and to working with the chair to get the conversation started. Again, I thank you for your indulgence while I offered a larger statement to give some history to our newer colleagues and to walk through the changes in the new proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
I wanted to first thank the maker for this incredible legislation. I couldn't agree with you more that this is about equity, this is about also small business and economic development in all of our neighborhoods. I also am excited to work with you about the neighborhoods that we choose to be a part of this. I actually know from your previous efforts that Charlestown has directly benefited already from expansion of our liquor licenses, I think in the first go-round. And so it's wonderful, and I think we can work together to make sure that Charlestown is, again, in one of the neighborhoods included, and making sure that they get part of the five additional, thank you very much, additional licenses. I just also wanted to say thank you, not only to the maker, I also want to commend the mayor, Chief Barrows, also for working with you and continuing to be committed to making sure that we're expanding economic opportunity. I also have to thank my colleagues in the State House, Rep. Michael Witz, Rep. Mike Moran, and Rep. Madro, and Rep. Danny Ryan. These guys are on my, three of the guys are on my delegation, and I know that each one of our neighborhoods are looking for continued development, but at the same time, having Rep. Michael Witz also make sure the North End wasn't part of the continued conversation about additional liquor licenses that we don't need there. I do want to talk to the point of the devaluation of the liquor license. I think, to be very frank, there's been an artificial valuation of liquor licenses. Because they were so few, they ended up costing almost half a million dollars each, which actually furthered the inequality in neighborhoods and making it so that only the rich and only the people who can get the loans and only the people who can get the capital were able to even open a restaurant. And as you know, without a liquor license, many restaurants, you can't serve beer and wine, even the best food isn't going to be enough to keep your doors open. So this is vital to the ability for family businesses to thrive. And I just also wanted to echo, I would love, yes, to launch right immediately into a working session, if possible, again, with robust debate and continued conversation, but knowing that there is a timeline, and July is it, I would love for this to be able to get into the State House as soon as possible. So I'm encouraging robust but quick debate. Thank you.
Counsel Edwards, would you like to add?
Oh, yes, please add my name.
Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Edwards' name. Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to thank Counsel Presley. I'd like to sign on, first of all. I'd like to thank Counsel Presley for putting this forward again. Her steadfastness on this issue has been incredibly important, and she took the words right out of her mouth. In 2014, we passed this, I was happy to vote for it. There's not a lot of things that we can say absolutely helps neighborhoods, but 40 new businesses absolutely helps neighborhoods, and I'm looking forward to a robust discussion as well. I'm looking forward to the working session, of course, because I want to add Rosendale.
Love for Rosendale. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel McCarthy's name. Counsel Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to thank the maker and congratulate her on continuing this work and doing it to some great success. I would like to point out one challenge that some of our establishments are facing in the city of Boston, and something that I'd like to see whether it can be worked into this ordinance or worked on separately, but a challenge when we think about the liquor establishment or the beverage service, I suppose, and that's the challenge that some of our newest businesses in the city are facing, and that's our breweries. We've got this sudden pop-up of all of these very cool breweries, and I suggest it's a great thing to go and check out, should you be interested in what breweries have to offer. But because of the way that their licensing is set up with a manufacturer's license and a pouring license, they are only allowed to sell the beer that they brew. And as great as that beer can be, it does often create a barrier for those breweries to be stable and successful over the long term. So I'd like to see if we can help them be more competitive and more successful as businesses and offer some support so that they can diversify their offerings just slightly, whether it's a house red, a house white, and a cider to complement their in-house brews. I think that would be very helpful to those. And, you know, there's one in Dorchester, there's one in JP, and there's a few others, I think, popping up across the city. We also have some distilleries that are facing a similar challenge with their businesses. So as we go forward with this work, I will bring that to the table and hope that we can find some support for those businesses in particular. And I'd like to be added. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sabi George. Madam Clerk, if we could add Counsel Sabi George's name. Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First, please add my name. Just get that off the way.
Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Janey's name.
Second, I just want to offer my deep gratitude to the maker. Thank you so much for your advocacy on this issue. It is a very important issue, certainly impacts my district. Also want to offer appreciation to the administration for all of the past work on this. As people have already noted, this is an economic justice issue. It's not just about equity, it is really an economic justice issue and how we're able to build wealth. So as, you know, chair, as a small business committee, Small Business and Consumer Affairs, I think this is so important. With my district in particular, we have pockets where we have restaurants and, you know, thriving business districts because of that, because of the liquor licenses that previously existed, because of the liquor licenses that came a couple of years back. And so I'm excited about the possibilities and the opportunities. You know, my neighborhood of Roxbury in particular has been, you know, over time, a desert when it comes to restaurants, but, you know, thankfully, because of the earlier work and because of your leadership on this issue, there are restaurants that now you can go, sit down, you know, with your family, have a nice glass of wine and a delicious meal, and it's a game changer. And so this is huge. This is a huge issue, certainly for my district, but for all neighborhoods in the city of Boston, if we're talking about really having thriving commercial and business districts where small business owners can open up restaurants and build wealth. And so just a couple of examples, Suya Joint, Dudley Cafe, which I know is a fan favorite, Taronga, Dudley Dough, all were able to benefit from before. And some of those were restaurants that we had here in our chamber a couple of weeks ago, or maybe a month ago now, for our Black History Celebration of Black Immigrants. So this is just a very important issue. I encourage strong, robust dialogue, discussion, and quick action, because this is big. So thank you so much, and again, please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Janey's name. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and first, I want to thank Counsel Presley for putting this forward again. Couple of things, points that I wanted to make, sign me on first, is with, one of the concerns that the industry has would be the size of those restaurants. So like when you say one liquor license, a 20 or 40-seat restaurant is a lot different from a 400-seat, so that's the sort of things that I look forward to talking about at the working session. And also, and I did the first site-specific liquor program, I guess, in the city of Boston for South Bay, very, very helpful to me. I think if we took that language out of there, that would give us, as city councils, as district councils, more sway when it comes to those large developers coming to us to have to negotiate with us, instead of it being at the, you know, just saying, if you develop a million square feet, we're going to give you licenses. I would advocate that maybe we look at that language and possibly take it out of there, and with the caveat that when you negotiate with us, that we'll get that piece of it done for them, but it shouldn't, I'm concerned about, you know, the large developments, just because you're developing a million or 700 square feet, whatever it's going to be, automatically we'll get liquor license. So those are just two thoughts of mine, but I think it's great work. My neighborhoods, all my neighborhoods have benefited from this, and I thank you for that. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor. Oh, Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Baker's name. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. There's two things that I love. One is really diving into the weeds on wonky legislation, and the other is going out for a nice meal in a neighborhood restaurant. So thank you, Counsel Presley, for marrying two of my passions. And thank you for your leadership in this. You've done remarkable work. I've been proud to stand behind you every step of the way, and we have seen a direct result of good government, good work, and how it has benefited the neighborhoods. You know, for many, many years, there was this misconception that more than one sit-down restaurant in the same block in the same neighborhood would adversely affect the other. And it's in, you know, one of the reasons that we saw in Counsel McCarthy's district, Rosendale Square, which couldn't be more different now than it was when I was growing up 20-plus years ago, because what happens is when you have up 20-plus years ago, because what happens is, when you have multiple restaurants, you have people then that are going to shop locally. While they wait for their table, they're going to go to a flower shop, or a wine store, or some other supermarket. It's going to make the neighborhood safer. You're going to have more activity bustling at night. It's going to help the economy. You're going to have jobs. It's going to help, obviously, our tax roll. So the benefits are enormous. We've seen it, obviously, in Jamaica Plain. We're seeing it in West Roxbury, too, but not far enough. So I ask that my name be added. I'll be fighting to include West Roxbury in this. When I campaigned for this seat in 2010, one of the most repeated things on the doors, as it related to the business district, was we had too many banks in West Roxbury, not enough restaurants. We have seen a growth, but there's still more that we need to do. So hope we can include West Roxbury. Look forward to working on it, and thank you again, Council Presley, for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Madam Clerk, if you could add Council O'Malley's name, Council Siomo, Council Flaherty, Council Flynn, Council Wu, Council Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0451 will be placed in the Committee on Government Operations. Moving on to personnel orders. Madam Clerk, if you could read docket 0452.
Thank you. Docket 0452, Council Campbell offered the following.
The Chair moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0452. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0452 has been passed. I'm informed by the Clerk that there are two late-file matters. Earlier, we actually added one of those. We took it out of order to the agenda, but we have one more hearing, well, which in the absence of objection will be added to the agenda. Hearing and seeing no objections, the second late-file matter is so added. Madam Clerk, if you could read the second late-file matter.
Thank you, Madam President. Offered by Councila Andrea Campbell. Order for hearing to conduct comprehensive review of reentry resources for incarcerated populations in Boston, whereas, according to the Massachusetts Department of Corrections, 32% of the offenders are reincarcerated within three years, and whereas, a disproportionate number of individuals caught in the cycle of recidivism are men and women of color. Order that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to review and discuss the current needs of both incarcerated populations and the providers who work with them, for the purpose of improving the services that ultimately prevent recidivism and foster the successful transition back into society of returning citizens. Those invited to provide testimony include representatives from the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department, the Mayor's Office of Public Safety, and other interested parties filed on March 21st, 2018.
Council Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Siomo. Thank you, Council Siomo. I first want to acknowledge that this is picking up, actually, off of some work that our former counselor, or colleague, Council Jackson, worked on. So this hearing order is similar to something that he filed in the past, where he held a hearing at the Suffolk County House of Correction, was the first time it had ever been done, to look at reentry programs and how the city of Boston could do a better job with respect to these programs. And so I want to acknowledge that previous work. I also see the importance of continuing it. I also want to acknowledge Council McCarthy, who will be a partner in this work as well, who will often have to remind folks in the community that he is the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. I am the vice chair, and we actually do see ourselves as partners in that work. And so I want to acknowledge his partnership in some of these discussions as well, particularly with the recent reentry organization that came to meet with us about some legislation, some things they have going on at the State House. But I think the hearing order is pretty self-explanatory. It's an opportunity for us to go into the Suffolk County House of Correction in partnership with Suffolk County Sheriff Tompkins, to hear about the work they are doing internally in that space, some of the programming they have going on currently, to hear about the benefits of such programming, particularly in a space like the House of Correction, but also to talk about ways in which the city of Boston can continue to partner in that work. I held a hearing last term on a program called Overcoming the Odds, and we were unfortunate in that we weren't able to get funding for that program from the city, but it did prompt a bigger discussion, which is what is the role the city of Boston should play in funding programs that provide reentry services, whether it's mental health support, housing, job training, other necessities that folks who are coming out of the system, men and women, need in order to rebuild their lives. The majority of folks that are getting out of not just the Houses of Correction across the Commonwealth, but also the prisons, are coming to the city of Boston. When we talk about reentry, we are largely talking about a big portion of residents who may not necessarily live in the city of Boston, but the first step they take is in the city of Boston. I always use a personal story here, and I got permission to do this. My older brother, when he got out, got out of a facility with nothing. No T-Pass, no transportation, no clothes, not a dollar, zero. And had to coordinate with him, he actually brought someone else with him who was living in the western part of the state, but didn't have the resources to get back out to the western part of the state. And they needed to get basic things, like driver's license, your social security card, all of those things. And don't get me wrong, he put in the hard work and continues to do that. So what role can we play to support these returning citizens? And at the end of the day, majority of folks who are getting out of these facilities are coming out. They will be on the street, they will be in our community. So the best investment is to invest in them when they are getting out. Of course, the even better way to do it is while they're in the facilities. And I think Sheriff Tompkins has done a really incredible job of thinking outside the box on how you deliver services within a facility. I look forward to my colleagues participating in the hearing. There are some logistics, and we will make sure that the community knows about that, because it is at the House of Corrections, so you have to bring an ID, and you have to go through security, and there are different security protocols that folks have to follow, and we will make sure that folks have that information. But I'm excited about this conversation. I'm also excited for the possibility of it turning into something and us looking at ways in which we can partner, not only with our sheriffs, our prosecutors, our police departments, our defenders, as well as community-based organizations. And I just have to give a shout-out to Dan Mulhern and Conan Harris from the Mayor's Office of Public Safety. They have done a lot of incredible work, as well as in partnership, of course, with the mayor, in setting up the office of reentry and making sure there's a one-stop-shop for folks who are getting out to be able to get some of this documentation and the things they need in order to be successful. And I envision them participating in this hearing as well. So thank you. Thank you, Council Siomo.
Thank you. Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and commend the maker, and thank you for putting this forward, and look forward to participating and just reiterating the need for us to have a conversation about how we ensure gender-responsive practices to support people in their transition. There really is no one-size-fits-all approach, and we have more women incarcerated than ever before, and we have to be very intentional in how we figure out how to meet the unique needs of women, you know, physically, emotionally, psychologically, and socially, when it comes to ensuring their successful reentry. So I look forward to having that discussion, and wish to have my name added.
Please add Counselor Presley's name. Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn.
Thank you, Counsel. I rise to add my name to the hearing, just as a way of background. I served as a probation officer for 10 years at Suffolk Superior Court, and was part of the reentry program, working with the mayor's office and with parole and probation, helping coordinate efforts. And I do know the great work of Sheriff Tompkins on this issue. I'd like to hopefully use my experience as a probation officer to, you know, add to the debate, but I do know that the importance of making sure that people coming out of jail and out of prison have a good plan before they actually get out, and that would include mental health counseling, job training, a stable housing plan, short-term and long-term, and some family support as well. So I think it's a great opportunity to learn about the issue and hopefully make some progress on it. So I want to add my name to the proposal.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Please add Counsel Flynn's name. Counselor Janey.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Please add my name. I also want to thank Counselor President and Counsel McCarthy for their leadership on this, and acknowledge former District City Counselor Tito Jackson for the work that he has done on this. This is a huge issue, certainly impacting my district, District 7, and residents throughout the city of Boston. Mass incarceration is pretty much just devastating families and communities throughout our country, and we need to do more here in the city of Boston to help people get back on their feet and re-enter their communities in a way that they can be successful. Again, this is another economic justice issue, but it is also an issue around how we can stabilize our families. So I'm just proud to stand with you, and thank you for your leadership, and again, add my name. I'm looking forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. Please add Counsel Janey's name. Counselor Sabi George.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I would like to first be added and commend the maker on this. I'm very much looking forward to this hearing and understanding the important role that we play as a city to support those that are incarcerated, because they will be our returning citizens. And I just want to note that my sister is a case manager at South Bay, and the ratio of inmate to case manager is extraordinary. She has, at any point in time, between 50 and 60 inmates that she's working with to prepare for reentry. And as much support as we can give her, the South Bay correction facilities, to support inmates, so that when they're returning, that they are fully prepared for that, and that we aren't just putting them into a van and delivering them to one of our shelters, which happens too often. So the more prepared we can help our residents be for their return, whether to our community or to another, the better we are as a city, for sure. And in the end, it's our responsibility. So as much as, you know, we talk about municipal issues, we can talk about county issues, we can talk about state responsibility, in the end, those are our residents, and we need to do what we need to do to support that work, and I think this is a great, great way to do that. Thank you.
Public safety. Please place the late file.
Wait, we have a whole bunch.
Oh, please add Counsel Baker's name, Counsel Edward's name, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Presley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, and please add the Chair's name as well, and please, as well as...
I think I added on already.
Okay. And please file that in the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Here we go. Madam Clerk, you do have everyone added to the hearing, or to the late file. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the green sheets. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Moving right along, the consent agenda. I am informed by the Clerk that we have four late-file matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing and seeing no objections, the matters are so added. At this time, the Chair moves to adopt. For adoption of the consent agenda, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Counsel Presley, for what purpose do you rise?
Yes, unanimous consent to make a statement.
Regarding?
Youth.
Thank you. So I guess I should give some point of clarification there. So one of the things, no, 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 you did not, actually, because I gave no clarification or anything. So thank you for being the test. I appreciate that, Counsel Presley. But I know that we asked for unanimous consent to ask to say a few words, and I've been talking to various colleagues, and sometimes people are curious beforehand what it is you might want to talk about. So I think going forward, I might just ask you to say regarding X, Y, or Z. So youth, absolutely. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Long meeting, and I don't mean to filibuster, but I just wanted to close the loop. Last week, I spoke about the number of our youth that will be going up to Washington, DC for the March for Our Lives. And again, we are so inspired by the leadership of Parkland youth and what they've been doing in the face of tragedy. We are similarly inspired by our local youth, who have been working to foster peace in communities. And so often, for communities disproportionately impacted by gun violence, we have lifted up the voices of mothers and fathers to talk about their grief in losing a child. But we need to continue to create space for youth to talk about the impact of them losing a sibling, of them losing a peer. And so I just wanted to give all of you the information, a group of which I'm a founding board member, Operation Lipstick, which is ladies involved in putting a stop to inner-city killing, which addresses the growing role that girls are playing in straw purchasing and the trafficking of guns.
Bless you.
God bless you, in partnership with an organization called We Are Better Together, Ruth Rollins and Leonard Lee. We have four buses totaling 220 youth and one plane of 45 youth that will be going to represent our Bay State, as well as 40 adult chaperones. They will be departing on Friday night at 11:30, and I'll be going to send them off. You're certainly all welcome to join us in Codman Square in Dorchester at Grace Church of All Nations, located at 451 Washington Street. I also want to give a shout-out to the Gabby Giffords Foundation and Skedaddle for their very generous fiscal sponsorship. And then just, if folks, you know, aren't up for a Friday night sending a bus off at 11:30 PM in Codman Square, if you would like to contribute to this effort, there is a link at the www-operationlipstick.org. The fundraising goal was $40,000. We are currently at $30,000. And again, if you make a donation of $10, you are sponsoring one youth. You can also make in-kind donations and drop those off at my office. It'd be very expensive for the kids to overnight in DC, so they will actually be on an eight-ride bus trip, then they will rally and protest, and then get back on a bus and come back. So if you want to make donations of toiletry items and things that will make this bus trip more comfortable, or healthy snacks, you can drop those things off at my office. So again, just congratulations and thank you to our youth for their activism. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Edward, for what purpose do you rise?
I ask unanimous consent to speak.
Regarding?
Oh, really? I was here. I paid attention.
I think I know, but regarding?
Regarding the BHA housing hearing that we had, actually, last week.
Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to rise to give an update on the very successful hearing that we had last week in Charlestown about the One Charlestown Project. As you know, it's the largest housing project in New England with 1,100 units, and I just wanted to also thank my colleagues, Counsel Wu, Counsel Presley, Counsel Sabi George, for coming out to support and to come to hear directly from the residents of Charlestown about how this huge project is going to impact us for years. Specifically, I also wanted to thank the central staff and the amazing work that they did, coming out to the Knights of Columbus in Charlestown, and also Representative Dan Ryan, who came there. And what we heard were a lot of different things. There's a real concern about this process, but most important is that the residents of the BHA are at the table every single step of the way, helping to make the real decisions, because it's their lives that are directly impacted by this. They will be the ones that are going to be displaced, they're going to be the ones fighting to come back to Charlestown. The questions that we had addressed is about the wraparound services, looking at how we can assure that students who are enrolled in BPS schools can continue to be enrolled in them despite moving to other places, looking at how we're going to make sure that there are very basic concerns of people who are currently living there in mold, whose children are sick, who have asthma, feel that they're also not forgotten in the fray as we're developing newer units, that we don't forget about the many people and the conditions that they're living under right now. I also wanted to make, just to also note, that the developer, Cockburn-Jennison, and the potential partner to be designated, like McCall-Cayman, and address many of the tough conversations and questions that we had about not only their profit margins, but about how they're going to make sure that the residents have a seat at the table, and how, in fact, they're going to be continue, are going to be more transparent and be held accountable by the folks, the citizens of Charlestown. So in any event, I just wanted to give this update on the hearing order of 0293, about the hearing that we had on March 15th, and thank you again. It was wildly successful. We had close to 200 people there, and I think it's something that's going to start a conversation. And I ask that this remain in committee, as we're still going through this conversation.
Thank you, Counsel Edward.
Thank you.
Before I recognize Counsel Sabi George, I just want to quickly acknowledge another young person who is here in the chamber, Counsel Janey's chief of staff. Samuel has his son, Alden, who is here, who is a sixth grader at the Quincy Upper School in Chinatown. And so, like I said, it's important to acknowledge our young people, especially the young people, people who actually work here. people who actually work here. So, thank you so much for being here, and Samuel, thank you for all the hard work you do for Counsel Janey. Counsel Asabi George, for what purpose do you rise?
Thank you, Madam President. I request unanimous consent to make a statement about the passing of a counselor from Rio de Janeiro, Brazil.
Go ahead, Counsel Asabi George.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Marielle Franco was 38 years old. Counselor Marielle Franco was a mother. Counselor Marielle Franco was a black LGBT female representative, the only black LGBT female representative on the 51-seat council in Rio de Janeiro, Brazil. Counselor Marielle Franco was assassinated last Wednesday, March 14th. Counselor Franco gave her life fighting for what she believed in, and for that, today, I want all of Boston to say her name. Marielle was from Maré, a favela in Rio. Favelas are known in Brazil as urban settlements that have historically been low-income, heavily policed areas with a lack of access to public services. Marielle dedicated her life to fighting for favela residents, many of whom are Afro-Brazilian like herself, and speaking out against social injustice and police brutality they face on a daily basis. She also fought for the women of Brazil, particularly Afro-Brazilian women, who consistently faced, constantly faced, extreme violence, racism, and sexism. A recent study showed that young black women in Brazil are twice as likely to suffer from murder as their white counterparts. She dedicated her career as a councilwoman to helping those populations. She led the House Committee on Women. She led the committee that tracks Rio's military intervention. Just the day before her death, she publicly denounced the murder of a young man killed by police in a favela. As a city council, we recognize that the murder of this extraordinary, innovative, black, gay, public servant is devastating not only to her family, community, and city, but also the world. As a city council made up of six women, women of color, we recognize that we will not be silent and accept this attempt to silence women of color's voices. I am sure we can all identify a piece of ourselves in Marielle and what we stood for. We will not stop fighting for what Marielle has fought for. Today, that is why today, I and my five sisters in service would like to recognize and pay tribute to the counselor. We ask you to celebrate her life by remembering the commitment she made to public service, recognizing her devotion to human rights, the human rights of women and men of the Rio, and to please say her name, Marielle Franco. I would like to leave you today with the words that Marielle left with a group of black women she was addressing at a roundtable discussion before she was slain. It was a quote from Audre Lorde. "I am not free while any woman is unfree, even when her shackles are very different from my own." We are actually, Kelly Ransom from my office was actually able to find the appropriate people to send this to, so that it will not go unreceived. And I'd like to thank all of you for signing on and for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you very much, Counsel Asabi George. At this time, I'd like all guests, my colleagues, to please rise. We will now adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. We will start with Counselor Marielle Franco. For Counsel Edward's, Eleanor Ellie Santo Suso. For Counsel Asabi George, Joan Welch Swonkey. Irene Louise Judith Roman. And of course, Counselor Marielle Franco. Counsel Janey, Mrs. Lorene Sealy. Mr. Richard Jolly. For Counsel McCarthy, Paul Terranova. Stuart Wilkie. And for Counsel Wu, John Rivers, Jr. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, the Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, March 28th, at noon in this chamber at the Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.